Does it mean order please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
No, that's Saturday, 15.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have some, two pieces of paper on the agenda, on the countertop tonight. One goes with item 1287, the MERS motion, and then the other one, it goes with 1147, the sculpture walk, and also, under the 1287, the actual agreement, the dates will be changed to tonight's date since we'll be voting tonight, so it's deferred from our previous meeting. So, with those changes, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move as amended.
Second. And is there any other things anybody else would like to add to the agenda? That's, we have a motion and approval, all in favor to approve as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, there are no absences. Citizen comment on agenda items, under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who'd like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Is there anybody that would like to speak to anything on the agenda? Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, or with request of any citizen or council member, and the item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
Support.
Move Morrow, second.
Rhodes.
Rhodes. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 1215 is a public hearing. This is the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 13. This would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 3, 2012 memo from Ministry of Finance, Assistant Corkman.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Move Morrow. Second Girba. Discussion. All in favor to acknowledge receipt, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we need a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
Move Tahar, second Rhodes. All in favor, open a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The public hearing is now open. This is a hearing on the setting of the General Appropriations Act. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to this issue? Basically, for those of you that don't know what that means, it means we're setting the budget for next year. And it also means that the mileage rate, which is the tax rate, is incorporated in this act, because it tells us how much revenue we're going to generate. None of you guys want to know what your taxes are going to be next year, so you can go home and tell your parents? Okay, we'll talk about it when we get to the actual motion, I'm sure.
Move to close, if there's no one.
Second.
Move Girba, second Morrow to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. This would be a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution as submitted, adopting the General Appropriations Act, our budget for fiscal year 2012-2013, providing for a general operating mileage of 13.3544 mils, including the funding required for fire protection, 2001 street debt mileage of .1201 mils, 2004 street debt mileage of .4289 mils, and a refuse mileage of 1.6266 mils, for a total mileage levy of 15.53 mils, which is the same total city mileage as the previous year.
Move to approve and adopt.
Second. Move Girba, second Tahar. Discussion. Mr. Roth.
I am still concerned that we're balancing this budget by borrowing, I'm not sure by what means, $950,000. We're going to have to pay interest, pay the principal back. I think this is probably unfair to our constituents, where raising the tax levy would be the inappropriate way, since we have it in our authority to raise it. And I think instead of paying taxes, it'd be very, much more prudent by raising the taxes, since the property values have decreased, the amount of money that most of the taxpayers have been decreasing over the years, and prices have gone up. Several years ago, we've cut back on staff, we're cutting back on staff, at this point in time by attrition, not hiring back. And this budget includes a raise of 2% for the city employees, the non-union city employees, even though they're making a contribution toward their health care and so on. I really feel that the prudent thing to do is pass on this burden within the limits we have. Instead of borrowing, it's going to cost us more money, it's just like a credit card. The sooner we pay it off, the better it's going to be, but you still have to pay off that principal. So, I will be voting definitely against this particular budget at this time.
Further discussion on this motion? Mr. Morrow.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this, as a, as a second-term council member, this is my fourth budget cycle, and I think it's important that, that our citizens know that of all the negotiations and budget workshops that I've participated in, I think this is the one where the council as a whole worked harder and was more deliberate than ever. And although this budget is far from perfect, I do think it expresses what our true values and priorities are, and invests in the right things. And I especially want to commend staff, especially Ms. Corkman, Ms., who's the name? I'm forgetting.
McDonough.
McDonough, excuse me, and our city treasurer, Ms. Bennett, because they really stepped up to the plate. They ran a whole host of scenarios, addressed our concerns, and answered our questions. And again, although this budget is far from perfect, I do think it's prudent at this time. I think we face a whole host of challenges and obstacles in the years to come, and so everything will have to be on the table next year. But again, at this time, I think this is a good budget, and I'll be voting in favor of the motion. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Mr. Girba.
I agree with Mr. Morrow that we did take quite a bit of time in assessing and determining what we needed to do on this budget. It is a tight budget. It's looking at an attempt to try and make sure that we're not trying to overtax the citizens, but it does raise questions in the coming years of how we're going to continue to support at the level of service that we're providing, especially in our police force and other activities. So, we're looking extremely well right now, from the perspective of being right on the border of what our budget should be and where we think it should be, but we're looking at not doing things, we're taking things out of the budget. We are looking at potentially bonding or getting actual finance for the roof that we have to replace on the DPW or repair. We're looking at long-term efficiencies in lighting and in sidewalk repair and such, which are basically long-term items, which we don't want to necessarily shoulder on the back of the immediate taxpayer. We should be spreading that over a potential time, and I think it's a good way of doing it. We can't simply assess a new mileage on top of everyone when everyone's looking at not having taxes put on them. But we will have to look at what we're doing next year, and I think for this year, this is a good attempt. There are some sacrifices going on. We have our staff employees that are taking a reduction in their retirement, in an attempt to try and reduce that. There are other cuts that we're looking forward. We've requested contracts be reopened, we're looking at everything. We're not trying to set a budget that isn't feasible, that isn't going to be managed by the city. And I think we also need to hold off until we see what's actually happening from the state level, in terms of what other potential impacts could happen through the personal property tax changes and whatever else may come in the next year or so. So, at this point, we're, I think, in a good position to what we're doing, but we are cutting it close.
Mr. Tahar.
Yes, thank you. I will also be voting in favor of this budget. While I agree it's not perfect, I think of all of the possibilities we considered, it leaves us in the most flexible position to meet what I think will be continuing challenges, budget challenges, in the next couple of years.
Further discussion? So, this is actually my last budget as mayor, and it was probably the most difficult one, for all the reasons that were stated by previous council members. Actually, Mr. Campbell and I have been, Community Observer is going to be doing an article, and we've spent some time talking to them about that. We have an excellent bond rating in this community. It's a double A minus, double A minus rate. I think, I think it's the same as Lansing, so we're actually, you know, I think the senator, our senator recently said that, with the reason we have financial problems is because of the management, how we manage a city. And I would argue that point, and I would respectfully request that from this council, that we work towards sending a letter to our representatives to explain what we've done to get to this budget today, because it was a very difficult budget. We are now 20% reduction in force in this community. We have also, as was mentioned, we're talking about doing a bond specifically, because we have a roof repair that needs to be done. However, because it's in mediation, and we're hoping to work something out with the person, the company that built it, I am in favor of not adjusting our mileage until we determine whether or not we have to pay the full amount of that roof. We have put that, you know, we are, that is, in that $950,000, so I think there does need to be some flexibility. And if you increase the mileage, that's done, you can't change, we can't change that vote next week. So, we have looked at all the benefits, we've looked at all the opportunities, we had probably 15 different iterations at the end of the different ways that we could address our budget, and I think the majority of council felt with, specifically as Mr. Councilmember Girba mentioned, there is a looming concern that's been discussed for the last year in Lansing about personal property tax. We have identified that as over 20% of our revenue. If that was eliminated, that would be a very significant problem, especially in light of the fact that our revenue has also decreased since 2008, about 20%. We've worked very diligently to cut costs every corner, and we have staff that works very, very hard. So, what we decided this year, in exchange for requesting them to contribute further to their pension contribution, we agreed to try to offset that with a small salary increase, because they haven't been getting those in the past. And we are looking at trying to renegotiate more aggressively with our unions. We have Teamsters unions coming up, and then next year will be our police negotiations. It's been very difficult. We have a very dedicated cadre of employees, City Manager Campbell, the Finance Department, and all the city employees are very committed to public service, and we're really trying to manage our budget and keep the level of service. But I will say, Mr. Campbell and I have talked about this, and the city council has talked about this in work sessions, if we continue to get deterioration of revenue that we've been getting from Lansing, it's impossible. There will be an impact to the level of service. So, I'm very concerned about that, and I'm hoping that this council will be in agreement that we need to make sure that our representatives that make the decisions that impact how we receive revenue know that we have very little tools. One tool is property tax values, and those are now capped because of Proposal A. If we've lost 20% of our revenues over the last four or five years, and we can only go up cost of living or max 3%, how many, how many years is that? You guys take math, right? How many years is that going to take for us to get that money back? So, we have very few options. And the revenue sharing that was, was discussed as part of Proposal A, statutory revenue sharing, has been just about eliminated, to the tune of if they had kept to what the original agreement was, with Proposal A, $4 million, that we feel has been a shortfall to this community over the last 10 to 12 years. So, it's been very difficult. I appreciate the hard work this council's done, and the staff has done to try to come to this day today, and it's been a very difficult time, and I think next year will be again difficult. However, there are lots of opportunities in this community, there's a lot of capacity for development and increase in the tax base. We have a lot of land in the business parks, and there is capacity in some of the vacant parcels in town, and better utilization of some of the buildings and things like that. So, I think there's a lot of opportunities, but again, this is probably the most difficult budget that I've worked on, except for when I first started on council, back in the 90s, there was a difficult budget or two that we also went through. But again, I would like to thank this council. I know everybody's very committed to serving the constituents in this community, and providing a very high level of service, and really making sure that your taxes are well-used and we're very effective in our governing. So, I know that was a long talk, but it has been, we spent out, you know, many hours on this. Mr. Roth.
Madam Mayor, I would too like to thank all the city staff that worked very hard, and my colleagues on the council, and appreciate their time listening to my point of view. And I still stand firm on it that I do not like to see credits meant a deficit, balancing a budget by borrowing money. To me, that's not the proper way to do things. The federal government does that all the time, state seems to be doing it, and I don't think the city should do it. So, that's my particular stand, and I think that many of my constituents I spoke with, I have the same kind of thoughts that I have, that if we can pay a little bit now and avoid paying more later, that's the better position I have. So, I do want to thank everybody and the people listening to me, and being open-minded about it, and I respect their opinions.
Any further discussion? We have a motion to approve and adopt the General Appropriations Act resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under unfinished business, item 1287, this is the MERS Hybrid Plan Benefit Program H. We have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 1, 2012 memo from City Manager Campbell to approve and adopt or not adopt the MERS Restated Uniform Hybrid Program Benefit H, Benefit Program H Resolution as submitted for all full-time staff and non-union, non-staff employees hired on or after June 4. Those forms that are attached to your packet, well, the dates will be changed, because it was just copied from the previous meeting, and to authorize or not authorize the city manager to execute the adoption agreement and/or any documents required to implement this plan with MERS.
I'll move to acknowledge receipt of the memo for discussion.
Okay. Move Girba, do we have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Motion and support, discussion.
Our concern on this was before, I think, trying to figure out what the dollar figure and everything was, and I think we've got a number here as to why, what we would have to bring forward in order to close out the plan.
Correct. 811, 463, yes.
Right. I think that was the question about before we were even thinking about adopting the change in, for the police candidate?
Right, that was my understanding. Mr. Rhodes had voiced that concern, and then requested to know exactly how much that unfunded gap, if you will, is to bring us to 80%, so we could go, instead of going from defined benefit to the hybrid plan, going from defined benefit to defined contribution for the new hires. But as, before we can do that, we need to pay the 80%, which is, or get it to 80%, which is $811,463.
I'd also like to, at one point, Lansing was talking about a revolving loan fund or some kind of program. Did you ever find out if there was anything there going on?
Had not had a chance to follow up yet.
Because, you know, we've done that before for, when we've had to do infrastructure investments, and this is really the same kind of thing, that this isn't really something that we can absorb, and most municipalities would not be able to absorb this liability in their budget to change to another program. So, I believe that this is going on across the state, and I think if Lansing could address that with a revolving loan type program or some kind of program, that would be very helpful. So, possibly that would be, and, because, I mean, this is definitely a direction we want to go in, but in order to go that way, we have to pay out the whole, you know, such a large amount. So, is there a further discussion? Mr. Rhodes.
I had a question on page three, item number D, talks about the benefit multiplier plan initially selected shall be irrevocable, shall not later be changed. I'm assuming that that would not preclude us, though, from dropping this program completely if we wanted to institute something later with another employee hire date?
Correct, that's my understanding, yes, that's how I understand it.
Thank you.
But if I could, Madam Mayor, to address that, those questions that Mr. Rhodes had as well, reference the multiplier. I did, we did, were able to get numbers as far as for the 1.0 and the 1.25, just as a, as a point of interest. It would be, as far as our contribution towards the defined benefit portion of the hybrid plan, if there was a 1.0, then, make sure I'm correct where you have, 1.0 would be 5.69% of the payroll, so for instance, for the new police chief position at the lowest amount of $82,000 and change for salary, that would be $4,716. At a 1.25, would be 7.16% or $5,935. And then the 1, the 1.5 that we had initially proposed, 8.6% would be $7,129, those would be annual costs. So, I just wanted to pass that along.
I'd like to congratulate, you know, or thank staff, I guess, for moving in this direction, both to reduce the multiplier and to lengthen the age and years of service. I think that was, that's appropriate.
Is there any discussion on the motion to acknowledge receipt? All in favor to acknowledge receipt, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then I was reminded by the clerk that it's not, so the motion, the next motion would be to approve and adopt or not adopt the MERS Restated Uniform Hybrid Program Benefit Program H Resolution as amended to June 4 for all full-time staff and non-union, non-staff hired on or after June 4, and to authorize or not authorize the city manager to execute the adoption agreement and/or any documents required to implement this plan with MERS.
Move to approve and adopt as amended and to authorize.
Move by Rhodes, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Thank you for your work on this, Mr. Campbell, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 11147, the Celine Sculpture Walk, this would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 29, 2012 memo from Celine Arts and Culture Committee, and the application for the community event for the Celine Sculpture Walk, and also the June 1 agreement statement with Mr. Rick Detroyer that was on the counter tonight, to approve or not approve the Celine Sculpture Walk for the period of June 2012 to be ongoing through 2014, as outlined in the Draper Shore, with a location change for sculpture number four to the corner of South ian Arbor and Henry Street, to approve or not approve the placement of two sculptures on concrete pads on city property, one at City Hall on the lawn between City Hall and the Fire Department, and the other on the Southian Arbor Street entrance to parking lot number four.
Move to approve and approve.
Second. Move Rhodes, second Tahar. Discussion.
I can give some background, if that would be useful.
That would be great.
So, following the successful completion of the Seats of Our Heritage Art Project downtown last year, artist Rick Detroyer, who did the Seats of Our Heritage project, offered to the Arts and Culture Committee that he would loan five of his works to the city for 12 to 18 months as additional public art. The committee was very enthusiastic about this idea, and, and now finally, after 10 months, the committee proposes the Celine Sculpture Walk to include the five loaned pieces from Mr. Detroyer, as well as sculptures we already have in the city, but really haven't ever highlighted as a collection of public art. In our, one of our committee goals, as, in, as from one of our committee goals, we have this sentence, "The Arts and Culture Committee recognizes that public art creates a richer living environment, one of distinction, enjoyment, and pride for all citizens." So, it's in the context of that goal that we are proposing the Sculpture Walk. All of the sculptures on the walk would be within reasonable walking distance from one another, and would thereby take advantage of the city's walkability beyond just the town, downtown area, including the two pieces at the library, will tie in very well with the footpath that the city and the library will be collaborating on to complete later this year. So, that's another advantage. And of course, the path, that path, the library path, will also tie to the depot path where other existing sculptures are located. I would also say additionally that the private property owners who have given consent to having sculptures installed are very excited finally to be able to contemplate getting sculptures installed soon. I would also like to, if I may, acknowledge the work of the committee. This was, this was a big project for the committee, and it was a process that none of us was really familiar with. So, we had, and it also went over a period where some of the membership of the committee changed, so I'm just going to mention names and hope I haven't forgotten anyone. Former committee members who worked on the project would include Diane Bennett, Lynn Fryman, Jim Roth, and Terri Sebo, and then continuing and newly appointed members of the committee now are Nancy Byers, Heidi McClelland, Betsy Peskowsky, Becky Peskowsky, Karen Ragland, Lori Rouse, Kathy Roth, April Scarlett, and me. And we also got a lot of support from city staff. Ms. Partridge is our staff liaison and tries to keep us in line in hundreds of ways. And we got lots of help from Mr. Campbell in ongoing advice about the process and the nitty-gritty of just putting the proposal together. Mr. Fordice gave us helpful consultations and advice on installation of the concrete pads that will be required for the sculptures. Mr. Grossman gave us helpful advice and assistance on the letter of agreement with the private property owners, and a recommendation to look at whether planning commission review was needed. And finally, Mr. Rubel reviewed our proposal with the question of planning commission review in mind. The conclusion was that it was not required, but it was very helpful to have that review. And he also helped us with providing the maps of the proposed locations you see in your packet. So, I can attempt to answer other questions there, if there are any, but I hope council, my council colleagues will vote to approve this project. Thanks.
Further discussion on the motion? Well, I'd like to commend the Arts and Culture Committee, because this is a great work, and you guys have done some, moving along very nicely for a young committee, so thanks for all your work. Sir, Mr. Rhodes.
I would also say that I appreciate the Arts and Culture Committee's work on doing this. It's not ever as easy as one thinks it ought to be to do something like this, and they persevered, and I appreciate that. And I wanted to make one further comment, and that is, on the corner diagonal from the Stone Arch is an abandoned United States Postal Service rusted, leaning-over mail drop box that they have not used in 20-plus years. And it would be nice if we could get them to either remove it or give us authorization to convert it into a piece of art.
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this motion? All in favor to approve and approve, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Under new business, item 1295, this would be a recreation center copy machine purchase. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 22, 2012 memo from Parks and Recreation Director Scruggs to award or not award bid to Hasselbrink Clark Company for the purchase of a Toshiba 6540 CT color copy machine at a cost of $12,990, plus the yearly maintenance contract at $1,152. To authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to execute any documents required for this purchase.
Move to award and authorize. Second.
Move Rhodes. Second Peters. To award and authorize, discussion. Mr. Rhodes.
I would just say, when I first looked at this request, it seemed like a fair amount of money, and in fact, it is, but when I looked at the comparison with the other companies that had bid to provide this service, both with respect to purchase price, capabilities, and maintenance agreements, and number of copies per year, this organization won hands down. So, I thank Ms. Scruggs and the rest of the city staff for their efforts.
Mr. Peters.
That's a lot of years on a copier, and I can really appreciate dealing with four copiers. And pretty soon, the parts aren't going to be available, so we don't have much of a choice. So, I think it's a, it's a great idea.
Mr. Girba.
I was just going to say, I mean, it looked like you were going to be able to save some costs and stuff for marketing and everything, if you can use this copier for that, instead of having to ship it out or outsource it to offset print, so that's a good way to balance it out, so, good job.
Any further discussion on this motion? All in favor, say aye, to approve and authorize.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 1296, the overband crack ceiling that's major in local streets, this is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 22, 2012 memo from Public Works Director Fordice, to award or not award the spring overband crack ceiling project to Skodala Construction in the amount of $36,820, and to authorize or not authorize Public Works Director Fordice to execute acceptance of their proposal dated September 21, 2011. Move to award and authorize. Mr. Tahar?
Second.
Second. Mr. Roth?
Yes.
To award and authorize. Discussion. No discussion?
Well, again, it seems like a very good deal for the city. They've held the price for a long time, and I've watched them doing their work in previous years, and looked fine to me, and I'm assuming Mr. Fordice agrees with that, or he wouldn't have recommended them.
Mr. Roth.
I had the same comment, that I'm glad they kept the price the same as the last two years.
years.
Mr. Har?
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Fordice. This was maybe a year ago. We had a work session on, on street repair options. And this was one of the things that was described that was very helpful in understanding what I was reading tonight.
Any further discussion on the motion? So motion to award and authorize. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 1297, this is ordinance number 743, fireworks. This is a motion to acknowledge received the May 30th, 2012 letter from Attorney Grossman to acknowledge receipt and reading of the ordinance number 743, and ordinance to repeal existing section 58-278 fireworks of the Celine City Code and to adopt a new Celine City Code, section 58-278, to provide for the regulation of the ignition, discharge, and use of consumer fireworks as allowed under the Michigan Fireworks Safety Act, MCL 28.451, what is that, SCQ, as amended. To approve and adopt or not adopt said ordinance number 743 as submitted. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve and adopt.
I'll second.
Move Rhodes, second. Roth, Mr. Roth, you have a question, comment? Did you have a comment?
He was just second.
Okay. Discussion, Mr. Peters?
I'd just like to make a suggestion. On section three, it states the times and dates that you could use fireworks, and we list holidays. We list ten holidays. I'd just like to make a suggestion, because I don't know if I've ever heard anybody set off fireworks on Christmas, or Columbus Day, or some of the others, Thanksgiving. But what some other communities do is they, you can set your fireworks off any day, but only between 10:00 AM and 11:00 AM, much like having a party in your backyard. Or maybe the police should just only act on nuisance calls. I'm not so sure I would be in favor of the city restricting the use of fireworks to just this, these ten holidays. Because in addition to these ten holidays, there's also some other times you might find this is going, there's like Chinese New Years, and Cinco de Mayo, and some others that are excluded here. So that would just be my recommendation that the, the times that you could use fireworks not be so much based on a holiday, but based on the time of day. You could exclude maybe a day of the week or something, but I'd like to see it be between, you know, say, 10:00 AM and 11:00 PM or something like that.
Mr. Grossman?
That may well be a sensible way to approach it, but the problem is that this is a state law. And we, and the state law says that we can't adopt anything. Let's see, it, under the act, a local unit of government is expressly prohibited from enacting or enforcing any ordinance that regulates the sale, display, storage, transportation, or distribution of fireworks, except as provided in this act. So it kind of hobbles.
So these days were chosen by the state?
Yes.
These days?
Yes.
So what are we voting on for?
We're voting on adopting a law which does not conflict with the state law. Because right now, ours does. And then we're required, we're required under this new act, the Michigan Fireworks Safety Act, Public Act 256 of 2011, which took effect on January 1st of this year. That's what's now governing fireworks in the state of Michigan. And it has many more provisions that I didn't copy that act. I mean, I tried to edit it down, but I can't edit it out. I can't allow more than the state will allow.
So it's, we're, sorry, framed?
Yeah.
Mr. Peters, are you?
I'm done.
Mr. Rhodes?
I was going to say that even though I moved this particular motion, because we do need to bring our city ordinance in line with the state, I'm not really happy with the fact that the state has expanded the use of fireworks, both from a safety issue and also from a disturbance of the peace of folks who aren't involved in the fireworks. But again, maybe that's just a reflection of my age also. Younger people seem to enjoy fireworks more. Just, just a side comment.
I love them.
Any further discussion? So we have a motion on the floor to approve the ordinance number 743 as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any commissioner committee reports from council members? Mr. Rhodes?
Just a comment here on the environmental commission, and that is that we are looking into the possibility of purchasing some more of the better quality recycled containers for placement in our downtown. And I've asked for input from the design team of the Celine Main Street Organization on potential placement organization, placements for that.
That reminds me, Hennifield has a recycled container, but no trash next to it. So guess what it's being used for?
Did have a trash.
Doesn't now. So can you?
I will attempt to address that.
Yeah. I meant to let you know about that earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner committee reports? If not, do we have any reports or other announcements? Mr. Rhodes?
Sorry. I just want to let everybody know that the Tuesday Farmer's Market starts tomorrow from three to seven at the Celine District Library in the West Parking Lot. Many of the same vendors that are at our Saturday Market, which is every Saturday now on South Ann Arbor Street, from eight to noon. And also, different item on June the 23rd, which is a Saturday from three to eight, we will have sports cars to Celine. So there'll be a lot of sports cars downtown Celine on that Saturday afternoon and early evening. Come on down and enjoy that. And the last comment that I wanted to make was, I attended a Economic Development and Land Use Committee meeting for MML this morning up in Lansing. We reviewed about a dozen bills, prospective bills, that are sort of moving their way through legislature. And two of them that might be of some interest to us here, well, they all are, but two specifically that I picked out of that, there's a Neighborhood Enhancement Act, which was initiated by Grand Rapids to create assessments of neighborhoods so that they could put parks and other special projects, because they don't have a Parks Village.
Like a special assessment.
So they do a special assessment of that neighborhood. If the, no more than thirty percent of the parcel owners within that assessment area objected, they could put that into place. And the other one was Civic Center Liquor License. Right now, and this was initiated by Manistee, right now, the limit is population of ninety-five hundred people for the municipality to have a liquor license so that they could put on special events and serve liquor at them. And this came up because they need dollars to support a theater that they've redone in Manistee. And so their request was to lower the population from ninety-five hundred to five thousand. We had a lot of discussion at the commission, committee meeting about that. And the general consensus was that we didn't really see any reason to have a population limit at all. Because why wouldn't a forty-eight hundred population community be just as able to do it as a five thousand one? So anyway, if this moves through, and whether it drops to the five thousand or removes the population requirement, then the city of Celine could qualify if we chose to have a liquor license and put on events with liquor to raise funds. I was thinking of, perhaps that might be a way to help fund the Renshaw Farm Museum, since we have the barn out there with the theater and the education program. Any thought?
Two questions. Do you have a bill number for that?
No, that one was just a draft.
Okay.
Didn't have a bill number. The other one is House Bill 5667, which is the Neighborhood Enhancement Act.
Okay. And then for the liquor license in which a municipality could acquire one, are we talking about beer and wine and addition, and in addition to that, spirits, or just beer and wine?
Yes.
Okay, the whole thing?
The whole thing.
Okay. Thank you.
That's my report for this evening. Thank you.
Are there any other reports and announcements?
Mayor, I wonder, for the benefit of the members of the audience this evening, and for those who will be viewing this at home, if Mr. Campbell wanted to give a brief update on the police chief search?
My pleasure. We've come to the point with the hiring committee, we conducted, brought it on to, from about forty-six or forty-seven applications through additional questionnaires that the applicants completed. And then that was narrowed down, and they had telephone interviews, and that was narrowed down to six people at, six final, semifinalists that were interviewed by the hiring committee. And that has been narrowed down to three. And of course, the, the three finalists, Larry Rinick, retired police chief from Davidson Township, Gerald Sherlink, captain with, currently a captain with the City of Troy Police Department, and David Northrup, City of Sturgis Public Safety Director. Those are the top three finalists that we're recommending to city council. That will be here at a special work session, open to the public. The public is invited. Interviews start at noon this Saturday, the ninth of June. The meeting will start at 11:30. And then the first interview at noon, the second interview approximately forty-five minutes apiece, so 12:45, and then the last one at 1:30. And then in between, we've offered for community tours for the, for the finalists. And then we'll also have two, we'll have a meet and greet for the public at 2:30, right after the final interview. And that'll go for about an hour. And then after that, we'll have a meet and greet for personnel from the police department, solely for the police department personnel, at about 3:30, for about an hour. And there will be comment cards at both places. So if, if folks in the public want to make comment on if they had, you know, what their thoughts were, or their interaction were with the finalists, all sorts of things, to provide the city council their thoughts and opinions for your consideration. Then a special meeting the 11th of June, so next Monday, for you all to consider for who you want to potentially make an offer to. So it's been, it's been a good thorough process working with career directions. I think they've done a nice job. Terim again. So.
Very thorough. Thank you.
Any other reports and announcements? I asked, we put downtown parking on, I talked to some business owners downtown about the ongoing problems with people parking that are employees in the parking lots during business hours, and the problems that it's causing for business owners. And so I met with Tom Todd and our interim police chief, Mr. Lindeman. And I don't know if you want to, what we talked about a little bit, and what his response was, and sort of our ideas. But as the weather's getting warmer, there's a lot more challenges to parking, and it's interfering with business. I'm getting feedback from business owners that it's interfering with their business. So I'd like to reevaluate whether or not we should be enforcing that and look at that as a, you know, an occasional enforcement, and not as a punishment, but as a way to provide spaces for all the businesses, and not just certain businesses, make sure the employees are parking in the long-term parking lots. I did a little drive-through on the day that I did the drive-through. The long-term spaces were wide open. So it wasn't like, there wasn't an option to park in long-term spaces. So I don't know, have you talked to the chief or anybody else since then about this?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have, or I have talked a little bit to the chamber, talked a little bit very briefly to the Main Street folks as well. And our next stop, our big stop will be with the Downtown Merchants. Their next meeting, I think, is next week. So we want to talk about that. But we did talk about a much less frequent enforcement. So whether that be weekly, or two or three times a month, or that type of, where we could utilize our own, our existing officers, as opposed to hiring a part-time, as we talked to you several months ago. So that's kind of where that, that's at. I want to gauge and kind of gauge the discussion with the Downtown Merchants. But, but we think that way, that would be a little more palatable, as opposed to a daily enforcement.
Yeah, it's, the intent is not to, you know, enforcement is not for customers, it's for employees and people that are not using the long-term lots. So I think there's been, I know there's been some effort made to try to correct that, and it's been brought to the attention of business owners, and it doesn't seem to be resolved. So an occasional enforcement hopefully will help that. And it would be erratic enforcement, not, you know, a regular scheduled kind of thing. So hopefully keep people that are long-term, you know, users of the parking lot into the parking that's twelve hours, and not the three-hour. So anyhow, I think it'll help business long-term, and especially as the spaces are starting to fill up, you know, the empty spaces are starting to fill up. So any questions or comments about that discussion? I know it's a sticky one, continues to be a sticky one. So I'm sure we'll be reporting back on outcomes there. Is there any other discussion items? If there's no other discussion items under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward this time, make common questions to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
We went over this two months ago about you guys wanting to put a public person out on patrol for parking, when you guys had the police one for radios. I think it's wrong that you guys think that's right. It's just absolutely wrong, because the merchants park there day in and day out, and then they leave at five o'clock. You guys have no right of doing that to our city. It's just completely nuts that you guys can't keep your mouth shut.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Is there any other business coming forward, the Celine City Council? We have, our next meeting is on June 9th. As was mentioned, a special meeting at 11:30, and then we will have another special meeting on June 11th. If we have no further discussion, we need a motion to adjourn at 8:17.
So moved.
Second tomorrow, second to Har. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.